Um, first of all, I would like to thank the ones that showed up. Can you hear? We slide down this way.
Yeah, that's better than you.
I'm a left hand. I'm used to going there. Let me go to the right. For the ones that was able to show up, I appreciate you for showing up for the special call meeting. It's been brought to my attentions and through my research and study that we needed to make an act on the fire department, on employees, staffing, and monies. With everything that's been going on in this county and the issues and constituents and commissioners as a whole, I feel that we need to end this year on a positive note when it comes to the county as a whole. And we need to start twenty twenty-five off on a good note. With that being said, I would like to see if we can thanks. If we can release the funds for the fire department that's been on hold, because the fire department is not going nowhere. It's it's not going nowhere. And we need to find a way to to fix what has not been fixed in the past and put it to bed. This is my opinion. I haven't talked to nobody. This is my opinion. Some things that's been done should not have been. So with that being said, we have froze their money. We need to release their money. We have froze their employment. We need to release their employment. We finally have a fire marshal. We finally have an intern chief. And I think between the two, doing both jobs, that it's gonna be a major turnaround for Vance County Fire. So with that being said, I would like to see if I can get a motion to release their funds and release so they can hire and get back to work.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, sir.
No second.
I have a motion. I have a second discussion. Motion carries. And on that note, before I go to the next subject.
You didn't take the vote.
Vote. I thought, okay, vote.
All in favor.
All in favor.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Unanimous.
Unanimous vote for the fire department on.
And so that's the release of the capital budget and unfreeze all full-time positions we're able to recruit for all positions for the Vance County Fire Department.
Yes, ma'am.
Just want to clarify. Okay. All right.
On the next topic that we would like to talk about in this special call meeting, it's in reference to what's going on with the city. And I think that the people as a whole is not understanding or realizing that it's not the county of some of the issues that's being trashed by. Commissioner Hester, would you like to start?
Yeah, I'd be glad to start. I was kind of taken back in shock when I read the newspaper and found out that the city of Henderson was gonna take away, you've been working with us thirty or forty years about inspecting permits. So I have thought about this and looked into it, and I think running our joint deal that if county is investing and county has spent five hundred to six hundred thousand dollars a year running that department. And if you look at the amount of permits, you you if you just cut went on a basis of cost per permits, that you're looking at the city of Henderson somewhere around maybe two hundred thousand dollars. So obviously, they're going in the hole, taking it back over. And, you know, I thought the government today, I thought the government was day was trying to do the best with what money you got. And I didn't realize, and it it really shocked me to realize, the city was getting it done for nothing.
That's true.
Because of the fact that they had had the opportunity to come out here and join with us. And so they were getting these things and permits and everything and no cost to them, zero. And then I found out, I I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman, but then I found out there was no discussion, but just a termination. Nobody has come discussed it. If I'm wrong, with the county manager, she can tell me. Did you ever have any discussion from anybody, anywhere from the city of Henderson, to terminate this project?
No, sir.
None?
The um, the way I found out it was um, through my chief inspector. He just called me. I believe it was on a Friday. And um, he he was asked some questions from city staff as far as revenues and things of that nature. And I believe that very next Monday, they terminated the contract. So there were no conversations. No, sir.
And so, in essence, no way, no, no plan, no nothing on doing this. And in essence, I think when we first heard it, Mr. Chairman, I heard it was terminated as of December thirty-first. But then I find out that they have to give six months notice.
Correct. And then it it ends on June thirty of twenty twenty-five. Yes, sir.
Saying, has anybody discussed the situation or what happens with permits within the last month?
No, sir. Um, I spoke to Terrell via text message about another matter, and he said he was gonna send me something in writing.
But the people are not there anymore. Is that correct?
Well, Terrell resigned, um, but I believe his last day is January the eleventh. And it's it's public knowledge at this point. Um, yes, he did. He resigned. So his last day is, uh, I believe, middle of January. So his council is aware. So it's public knowledge at this point. So. Yeah, everybody's aware and his staff is aware. So it's, I can say that.
When did he resign?
Last week.
He did.
Yeah, he's leaving.
Well, what what really bothers me more than about this and anything else is we're moving in the wrong direction. We should be saving money for our taxpayers, not spending money. And when you get something for nothing, I don't know how you get any cheaper. How do you get any cheaper than nothing?
They don't even have a level three inspector.
And well, if you hire a level three inspector, what's the average price of a level three inspector?
About a hundred to a hundred and seventeen thousand.
That's correct.
And they will get the two hundred thousand a year.
So how are you gonna, how 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 are you gonna justify having a department and and moving forward if you don't have any plan?
I had that discussion with the mayor.
Who's the mayor?
And the uh, and Terrell last week explained that to them what it was cost to set up that department.
What did they say?
They said they were going to work it out. They did not have a plan. They stated that they would be able to work it out. Uh, and they were going to be able to find an inspector that was going to be able to assist them. They asked if uh, our department would be able to assist them. I stated that that could only be by contract with the county approved by Miss Perry. And that's where that was left.
So so in essence is, how hard is it? How hard is it to get an inspector? And for that's concerned, how hard is?
Well, the, a multi-trade level three certificate, a certified inspector like myself, there are only four hundred and nineteen of them out of four thousand and so in the state of North Carolina.
You said.
They are very uh.
Far. Yeah, very limited.
You said four hundred and four thousand? That's one percent.
So um, some, I'm sorry, sir. Some jurisdictions, single trade, level threes, they might even be five. With myself, since I am certified in all five trades, again, there are only four hundred and nineteen of us in the state. I am certified in a sixth trade. There are only nine of us in the state that are certified, six.
So so in essence, so in essence, if I heard you correct, the the city has made the comment to you, if they couldn't get anything straight, they're willing, they they wanna go back now and and pay for it instead of getting it for nothing?
I would say your assumption is correct.
I I I'm 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 not, I I don't know. I don't know about the rest of us, but I I run a business. I I've never heard of running a business where you where you get it for nothing and then you wanna go pay for it. I'm not sure what that means.
When you're dealing with people who don't own a business, then this is what you get.
Well, I I I sure hope we're looking at the future of trying to save the taxpayers' money and not spend the taxpayers' money. And, Mr. Chairman, this is a complete shock, and and I would hope that the county attorney sometime get involved with this is, he's not talking right now in the future to talk to the city about this and have some kind of a report in in January, if we could, since this is such happen over time, have some kind of report from us in January uh, on this issue. That's all I got to say.
Mr. Hester, if I could clear up.
Yeah, sure. I'm sorry.
Because there was some discussion, I think that there was misinformation going on uh, to the city that the county was collecting fire revenues uh, that the city uh, thought that they were entitled to. And I made it clear that the county was not collecting any fire revenue, that all fire revenues that were generated were being collected by the city fire department, that no revenue for city inspections for fire were being collected by Vance County. And that that was confirmed and uh, that was set straight. So Vance County is not collecting any fire revenue that should be uh, revenue that belongs to the city.
So basically.
And you know, I'm 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 just flabbergasted and taken back. If there's something like this would happen and no, no plan, no action, no way of moving forward uh, for our community as far as in the city and the county is concerned, it's just, it's just, just doesn't look like it was received in the right direction.
Well, by them making a decision with no vision, where do that leave us, Miss Perry?
What do you mean? As far as code enforcement still continues throughout the county. I don't think it affects us that much, but I think Frankie had some information as far as rev- is that what you're asking about revenues? Is that what you're asking?
Revenues and if they don't get a level three, are we gonna go back? I mean.
I guess that's a board decision at that time, once we get there. Um, do you all want to know what the revenue is within the city? Frankie, you have that information?
Since twenty twenty-two to now, um, code office, code enforcement has done eleven hundred and ninety-one inspections within the city limits. In that two-year total, it's three hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars and twenty cents. Since two thousand and twenty-two to now, code enforcement has done thirty-five hundred and seventy-six total permits. That's county and city. A total fees of a million, thirty thousand, four hundred and fifty-one. And one thing I want to, you know, reiterate on what um, Bob Roche has said, you know, even if the city can't hire a level three inspector, if they hire in a level one, it's gonna take them five years to get an inspector to a level three. And I I went ahead and pulled out our salary grade and chart for our level three inspector, code enforcement officer. Ours is a grade seventy-two, which a salary range of men of fifty-seven, six fifty-five to a max of ninety-two, two forty-eight. And we're well below the market value.
And for um, this budget year, um, projected revenues for inspection fees, um, we budgeted four oh seven, three ninety-five. So that's just for the entire department. That's what we budget.
And our. They discontinued this with no department, no level three, and no city manager. And they gonna work it out. I think this makes sense.
And the average, average budgeted budget for us is five hundred and forty thousand dollars a year for our code enforcement.
So what's that you got in your hand?
Um, this is all the inspections within the city limits.
Is that over a two-year period?
Over a two-year period.
So if you look at it per year, then you, how much do you talk about coming in for inspections per year?
A hundred and ninety thousand.
That ain't enough to run a department.
That way. Not when you gotta pay an inspector a hundred and seventeen, a hundred and twenty.
And I speak from personal experience how long it took to get a level three person on staff. So it takes years. So.
That's because there's four hundred and nineteen of them.
That's if you're lucky.
That's correct. Now, we got very lucky. We did. Yes, sir.
So the next couple of months will be very interesting, huh? Can't wait.
I just think, I just wanted to say, Mr. Chairman, I I I really and truly want us to look at saving money for our citizens as far as taxes is concerned, not spending money and and making it worse.
I agree with you, sir. I totally agree with you. Uh, Mr. Leo, would you like to add anything to this?
I don't I don't know what to add to it. I just say, I what I want to say, I can't say in public, so.
I respect that. I would totally because.
Everybody's shocked.
Everybody's shocked. I mean, these impulsive decisions is is affecting everybody. Miss Perry?
So you can't get something, what is it? They're getting something for nothing and they're going to come around and spend way more than what the division costs and everything? I just, I don't get it.
And so, and that's since nineteen ninety-one. And the counties and jurisdictions that I've worked in historically, the county normally charges um, the municipality through an interlocal agreement. Um, they'll charge the municipality to have their staff do work within the city limits. And so, yes, since nineteen ninety-one, we've never charged a dime for code enforcement.
As I listen to it, I just, I I think what they've done is reactionary kind of situation, and the process has not been fully invented and everything. And so they really don't know what they're getting, they really don't know what they're getting into and everything. And that's, that bothers me. I just, I, and you know, we're preaching to the choir. We we know, we understand about, I'm sure they realize what's in front of them.
Yeah, so just for my clarification, um, because I'm not into construction and all that. So technically, when we when we have new developments come up into the city limits, um, whereby we assisted with the inspections for new construction and when people were doing repairs over a certain amount, we assisted the city with that. So from June going forward, we won't be offering any kind of assistance. They will be hiring their own individuals. Is that correct?
Right now, as the agreement reads, the Vance County Inspections Department does all inspections with new and uh, for any project uh, in the county and the city, our agreement. After June, we would no longer do any inspections for this, any uh, projects within the city of Henderson. They would have to have their own inspectors uh, certified to do the inspections. We would only do Vance County inspections.
Okay. And so I guess my question is, right now, uh, I know sometimes depending on how many projects is going on at a given time, sometimes you get a backup, right?
Yes.
And so in terms of them going forward, um, when there's a backup, a possible, how many inspectors do, usually does it require really to do an effective job to get, you know, to get it on?
It depends on uh, what is going on at the moment, and and they have a lot of stuff coming down. Like there are two developments in the works with over five hundred single-family homes that are now within the city jurisdiction. So those will all have to be individually inspected, that they'll have to have an inspector.
So basically, what they saying is this, everything's when we put on hold.
Everything.
It's about to stop until they figure it out.
They're gonna figure it out.
So they just stopped the growth of Vance County?
So all five hundred is gonna have to be done by their new department. Okay.
And you say it takes roughly how long?
It depends. Any of those inspections can take up to an hour piece per home, depending on the type of inspection.
And how many inspectors are required?
Well, it to you, uh, it's by certification. So each one of those homes has to be certified for plumbing, mechanical, electrical, and building. So you have to be certified in four trades. So unless you are a multi-trade inspector, they will need four individual inspectors to inspect those homes.
And you said the average salary is how much?
One seventeen.
For a multi-trades and multi-trade inspector is plus a hundred thousand to a hundred and seventeen.
Well, they probably have, I know we had a difficult time finding um, an inspector. It took us a couple of years to actually find someone that had all of the certifications. You know, we had um, an individual that had some, but not all of them. So technically, if you hire somebody to maybe have two or whatever, then what you're talking about, Ron, about?
Still have to go out and get somebody else to do the other inspections, because it's illegal to have somebody who's not qualified to do the inspections.
So it still will be put on hold either way you look at it.
Mm-hmm. It's the level three can do it.
You can get one done, but you ain't ready to get the other three done.
Might get a plumbing inspector, but no electric inspector.
But we're still at a standstill.
They have to find somebody to come in uh, contract with, they can find them. They're very, they're on Inspector Marketplace, which is uh, very thin at the moment.
We've been doing this for free?
I had, can I ask one question?
You can ask anything you want, buddy.
In other counties or other locations, if they don't have qualified inspectors to do the inspection, can they go out and hire somebody? Do you know what they're charging approximately these days?
It is a negotiated fee. Um, we ran into a situation here where I was going to be shorthanded and needed a plan reviewer. And I could not find a plan reviewer, a commercial plan reviewer to help me uh, for under seventy dollars an hour. And so needless to say, we did not hire a commercial plan reviewer. We uh, worked our way through it, got through it. It's a negotiated fee with uh, whatever that inspector wishes to charge. So you're really at the mercy of the inspector, you know, what they wish to pay. When uh, when the county was looking for uh, uh, contract inspectors, they negotiated with uh, with us as to what our rate would be.
Is it, is it possible for you between now and January to look around and just see what the pricing, not for hiring anybody, that that's the city's problem, but approximately what kind of cost it would be if they ever found anybody?
I can tell you, knowing from uh, inspectors I know on the marketplace who are level three, that are not coming to this area, fifty dollars is the minimum, fifty dollars per hour.
Per hour? You mean, so is that, is that the time they leave?
We're about to.
Oh, yes.
Until they get back home.
Plus miles, plus miles.
Plus miles. Thank you.
That's right.
If you can get somebody to come to Vance County. When we looked on that the other day, there are only uh, four inspectors that were interested in coming to Vance County, and not all of them had the certifications that were needed for that position.
So you, in essence, you might have to hire two or three inspectors because you don't have anybody qualified to do all inspections?
Sure.
So instead of costing two or three hundred dollars, you may be talking a thousand dollars for a pro- for something we've been, we've been doing for nothing?
And they gonna do this on two hundred thousand dollars?
Not a good way to spend taxpayers' money.
Well, my question would be this, if I may ask. Let's say it don't work out for them, and somebody figured it out that, who I was figuring it out. How would you handle that, Mr. Renee?
So we could have a conversation with whoever the city manager is at that time, since it won't be Mr. Blackman, and see if the council would be interested in going into an interlocal agreement with the county. I would, I would think that an agreement needs to be revised and we should charge. That would be my recommendation, for sure.
Charge his prices?
We could, I would work with the county attorney to figure out what those rates would be. Yeah.
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 We, we certainly paid the going rates for the water reservation fees years ago when we negotiated all that.
So would that be a board or would that be?
I would bring it to the board of commissioners, for sure.
Okay. Anybody got anything else on that? Miss Perry, Miss Finkston?
I just want to say that I felt like, um.
You're talking to Mike.
I felt like in the past, you know, we had a working relationship where we were actually assisting one another to make sure that the inspections were done. Uh, I've had work done myself where I, it was required that I had certifications, and sometimes you had to wait for people to come out. Um, and I felt like, because um, people were working together, because I live in the city limits, that I probably receive service quicker than I probably will in the future if I have similar work done. And I feel like we've offered our services, if our services are no longer needed or desired, then we, as a board, I I believe we should endorse their decision and just move forward. Because I think with less obligations of the inspections for other city, we we can go forward with whatever projects we have in the county. Um, it may be a situation where uh, because potential builders feel like they're not gonna get their inspections, they may desire to move projects from the city to the county, knowing that they can ba- basically get uh, the the services they're gonna need on a quicker basis, because time is money. And if you're not getting those inspections for each day of delay, a lot of time, that costs a lot of money. So um, I don't feel, I didn't see it coming, but now that it's here, I think it's something that we can deal with. You know, we've struggled in the past with making sure that we had uh, qualified people to do the job. Um, we had situations where people have come and people have gone, and people didn't have the proper certifications. And I'm very comfortable where we are now that we have in place the individuals we need to go ahead and get the job done. But if the city doesn't want our services, then to me, you know, that's, I accept their decision, I'm, you know.
I got one question for you, Mr. Hester, and I'm done with it. With what just transpired with the city and their decisions, how would that affect the EDC, the building, bringing in development, bringing in businesses, houses, etc.?
Say this, anytime you have the teamwork of the county and the city working together, you aid economic development. Anytime, and I, as a matter of fact, instead of going further apart, we should be going closer together because the size of our county, we are tier one county, which means that we don't have as much tax basis in the city and the county. So we need to grow that tax basis. You don't grow by separating. You grow by joining and being a joint venture. Is is the answer to your question. But one question I have that that uh, one of the commissioners just brought up, I think indirectly, did you ever receive any formal request in writing in reference to this problem we're having?
No, sir.
You mean, you've you've had, you you never got anything?
No, sir. It was a surprise.
I got a phone call.
Oh, we only got one public records request. I forgot about that.
Well, I'm sorry, did what, Jonathan?
We had a public records request a couple of days before the decision was made.
But nothing, and nothing directly to us to talk to us?
No, sir.
Who?
Yeah.
Okay, before we adjourn, I will, um, I'm, by me being on, by elected to the chair, I have came to a decision that I would like to come off the EDC board to clear up rule, to clear up my availability to be, to be able to be the functioning chair. And I would like to come off of the industrial park. So my recommendation is to put Dan Brumming on the industrial park and I come off. And I would like for Mr. Hester, while he's sitting here, to replace me on the EDC board. I'm I'm on a lot of boards, I'm on a lot of committees, but now that I am the chair, I need to stay within my limits. And if I can't give it a hundred percent, I don't think I need to be there. I need to focus on where I've been elected to by my board, and this is where I would like to be. So I would like a nomination for Mr. Hester to replace me on EDC and Mr. Brumming to replace me on industrial park. You want a motion? I I can't give a motion. I make a motion that what the uh, do we do it individually? Individual or collective, huh?
Do one. You can do one.
We do one at a time. I make a recommendation that um, we replace um, Chairman Austin with the Commissioner.
I make a recommendation that um, we replace um, Chairman Austin with Commissioner Hester on the EDC board.
Give a second?
I'm not gonna vote against myself. I made it up. You want me to do again? I I'm gonna make, I I. I'll vote for myself. I'll second it.
Okay.
No discussion.
I have a s- motion. I have a second um, discussion.
Okay, first of all, I think that's a major decision generally that the board makes. Normally, when we do such things, we actually put it on our agenda. So that people will be notified, not only the board, but also the uh, community as well. This is a motion or a topic that's being brought up at for first appearance. This is not a committee decision. This is a board decision that the entire board makes. I think we have two people who are not here, who have no knowledge whatsoever of what this um, proposal is gonna be. I think they're entitled. If I wasn't here, which I almost was not here because I canceled a doctor's appointment to be here, I wouldn't have known about it. And I feel like if we're gonna go forward, we need to go forward with transparency. And I think each board member. Needs to have an opportunity to hear these type of motions and they need to have an opportunity to take part in the discussions and also in the votes. And so going forward, I think you put out your recommendation and it would be my opinion that we postpone any kind of vote on it. Until all of the um, members can be present and participate in whatever votes we take on these issues. So that would be my position.
Well, too, what you just said is, we work too. We took off work. Some had doctor's appointments, some sick. We was able to make it. And even if January sixth come, when I meet him, who says two or three might not be able to make it there?
They may not be able to make it, but at least they have knowledge.
Well, y'all didn't have no knowledge. I didn't mention this to nobody until now.
And that's the point. Nobody knew. You know, you're making it, this is a first impression where you're making a mo- a, bringing up a topic where the whole board is not privy to it. And then you're asking us to vote on something of that.
I'm voting to come off.
Well, yeah, you voted to come off, but then you, and that's fine if you wanted to resign. But in terms of now reappointing without notifying the whole board, you know, I don't, I I don't agree with that.
In terms of further discussion, you still want a board term, we still could have two members absent, three men absent, so he's still, so I call for the vote, call for the vote.
Well, do any more discussion? Call for a vote? Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Perry?
No.
Ms. Finkston? Yes.
No.
Motion carries. On the second, second motion is for Dan Brummett to replace me on industrial park.
I make the motion for that since I'm in for, that that Dan replaces you on the park.
I'll second.
I have a motion. I have a second. Any discussion?
I just made the same argument I made um, for the former um, in the former situation. It's just, it's the same, it's lack of transparency, a lack of knowledge that's going forward with the other board members that don't think it's fair. Um, that we're going forward with information that nobody knew about and and we just getting it for the first impression. We've had discussions in the past about not knowing prior to time for a vote and we. You know, I thought the consensus of the board was that we would know ahead of time whenever we'd be called to have made such votes as this, there wouldn't be a surprise as it is today. So again, um. I feel like this is not the appropriate time to do the vote.
And they ask?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote. Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Perry?
No.
Ms. Finkston? Yes. Motion carries. If there's nothing else, then we adjourn. Dispersonal call me.